Okay, it is four o'clock and I will call the April 24th, 2023 City Commission Meeting to Boarder. I would look at staff for confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. With that, may we have roll call.
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Here.
Commissioner Longbine.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Would those who are able, please stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, that will lead us to awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, recognition of the month of April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Salina. Jenny Seitz, Director of Community Engagement for CAPS of Salina, will read the proclamation.
Whereas we are living in a time when disclosures of sexual abuse and harassment are becoming mainstream, child sexual abuse still lives in secrecy and shame. And whereas children have a right to be safe and to be provided an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow. And whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening Saline County families, thus preventing the far-reaching effects of maltreatment, providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds, and consequently building the foundations of communities. And whereas, by providing safe, stable, and nurturing relationships for our children, free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can ensure that Saline County's children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of this state and nation. And whereas, there were 984 cases of child abuse and neglect investigated by the Department of Children and Families in Saline County in 2022. And whereas, child advocacy and parenting services, also known as CAPS, provides both prevention and intervention programs designed to reduce risk factors associated with child abuse and neglect while focusing on educating parents and empowering children. And whereas, CAPS conducted forensic interviews for 133 child victims of abuse or neglect and/or witnesses to a violent crime in 2022. Of those, 35 sexual assault nurse examinations were provided. Those victims also received professional advocacy, a medical exam and care by trained sexual assault nurse examiner on the Sexual Assault Response Team, a referral to trauma-focused mental health services and follow-up supports. These services are delivered through a multidisciplinary collaboration between city of Salina and Saline County law enforcement, CAPS, Salina Regional Health Center, Department of Children and Families Child Protective Custody, Saline County Attorney's Office, Central Kansas Mental Health Center, and private therapists trained to use trauma-focused practices. And whereas, CAPS began as a child abuse prevention coalition in 1978, the agency has a vision of a place where every child is safe, healthy, and strong. CAPS hopes to shine a light on abuse to create awareness and increase support through the following public events. Go Blue Salina Denim Days. Businesses are encouraged to get employees to wear blue jeans and/or royal blue to collect funds for CAPS and spread awareness by taking photos of employees showing their blue support. Each participant will get a sticker to wear showing they believe every child should be safe and loved. We will shine a light for survivors. Citizens are encouraged to turn their porches, lamps, or a room in their home blue during the month of April to light the way for child sexual assault victims and to help them shine. Blue light bulbs are available for purchase at CAPS. Pinwheels for Prevention Challenge, a roaming pinwheel garden that is spread via donations from individuals who wish to plant the garden in their yard to show they believe in creating spaces where every child is safe, healthy, and strong. Pinwheel planters are available for businesses to rent for their lobbies or windows, and information about the gardens and planters can be found at capsofsalina.org. Also, National Crime Victims Rights Week will be commemorated April 23rd through 29th. This year's theme is Survivor Voices: Elevate, Engage, Effect Change. It calls upon communities to amplify the voices of survivors and create environments where survivors have the confidence that they will be heard, believed, and supported.
Okay, thank you. I know CAPS is dear to my heart. My wife has served on the board twice, and it's just amazed me how this organization has grown over the years and has had tremendous leadership. Although I wish it was an organization that was not necessary.
Right.
But it is. Could you tell us a little bit about how an individual or someone can contact CAPS or one of the organizations if they have an issue?
So for our Child Advocacy Center, Chris's place, referrals to the advocacy center are made through DCF or by law enforcement. Many of our other programs are by self-referral, so like our parent education, family mentoring, our respite care. We currently have six prevention services and two intervention services, and the advocacy center is the only one that uses outside referrals.
And I see you have three individuals standing behind you.
I do. I have the wonderful support of BACA. They are bikers against child abuse. They are also child advocates that are assigned to different youth when a case is assigned, so they get to work with that child and go to the court with them, just kind of be there to help support them, make them feel safer, so.
Would one of you like to say a few words, or?
There you go, Mad Dog.
I'm Mad Dog. We are an organization of bikers that are worldwide. We represent the chapter here in Salina, Smoky Hill Chapter in Salina. President of this chapter here. We have a controlling board with the rest of the people that are in the chapter with us. We are here to empower children that have been abused. That's our goal. Our goal is to make them feel safe, make them feel safe at home, make them feel safe if they're going to court. We escort them to court. We, just whatever we can do to make them feel safe. We have instances where they're feeling very scared at home. We put a call out to everybody in our group and outside chapters. There are six chapters in Kansas, and if we go and stand outside their home, make them feel safe. We've done that for three days straight at other locations. So this is what we do. We support the child and make them feel safe. We take them on from any age up to 18. Once they turn 18, they can join the chapter, or they go on to whatever. So you'll see us around. We will come to court here. We won't be in our cuts, respecting the courts here, but we're here. We're here to help support the kids, and these people are our contact that help us get involved.
Thank you for being here.
Sure.
I've got to admit, I wasn't aware of your organization and appreciate your dedication. And it is true, it does take a village to raise a child, so thank you guys for being here. Appreciate your work. So I do have a proclamation for you. If you'll come up front. Thank you very much for sharing. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, that'll lead us to item 3.2.
Item 3.2, recognition of the week of April 23 through 29, 2023, as National Library Week in the city of Salina. Melanie Hedge Speth, Director of the Salina Public Library, will read the proclamation.
Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions for all members of the community in their cities, towns, schools, and campuses. And whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that foster a sense of connection and build community. And whereas libraries connect people to technology, providing access to internet, computers, and training that are critical for accessing education and employment opportunities. And whereas libraries offer opportunities for everyone to connect with new ideas and engage in lifelong learning through access to books, research resources, multimedia content, programs, and classes. And whereas libraries are children's doorways to a lifetime of literacy and learning by providing resources for parents and guardians, engaging educational programs, a diverse collection of information and stories, and a community space. And Amy Adams, our Assistant Director, is going to read the rest of it.
Whereas today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of a building, and everyone is welcome to use their resources. And whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. And whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nations to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, I, Michael L. Hoppick, Mayor of the city of Salina, hereby proclaim that April 23rd through 29th, 2023, be designated as National Library Week and urge our citizens to visit our libraries and explore all they have to offer.
Thank you. And again, I know a lot of people think of a library as being full of books, but there's so much more. Could you give us just a couple examples of some of the programs that you have going on at the library that individuals may not be aware of?
Well, we have a summer kickoff coming up on May 19th, so if you want to come out for that. And then we have summer at the library and summer reading throughout the entire June and July time period, where kids especially can come in and log the books that they've read and win prizes and participate in all kinds of great events.
And what's the seed program? Explain that to us a little bit. That's kind of a fun little program.
All right, so we do have a seed library in the building where you can come and select four packets of seeds to take home and start in your garden. So far this year, we've given over 3,000 packets of seeds out in the community, so it's a way to get people started in gardening.
And I'll ask one more question. I'll give you a chance to do a little free advertising. Explain maybe some library expansion ideas that you have.
Yes, we would like to work on our youth services area and consider a remodel for that area to continue to help it grow, to meet the needs for all the youth as we keep working with them and providing a lot of programming for youth.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I do have a proclamation for. Don't be shy over here. Come on. Thank you, ladies. Appreciate you being here. Okay, that will lead us to item 3.3.
Item 3.3, recognition of the day of April 28th, 2023, as Arbor Day in the city of Salina. Justin Turner, Vice Chair of the Tree Advisory Board, will read the proclamation.
Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas, this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are renewable resource, give us paper and wood for our homes, fuel our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas, trees in our city increase property value, enhance the economic vitality of the business areas, and overall beautify our communities. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renew. Now therefore, I, Michael L. Hoppick, Mayor, City of Salina, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 28th, 2023, as Arbor Day in the city of Salina, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Thank you, Justin. Could you maybe update us on maybe some of the projects or visions that the Tree Advisory Board has at this time?
Yes. Big project that we've been, you know, on our, to relate to this, is Friday, we'll be meeting at a park. I believe we have three new junipers. We lost three pine, pine wilt at the park, so we'll be going in, should be 10:00 AM, to replant those trees, get a fresh new species in, one that should be resistant to that disease, and help provide a windbreak and kind of a privacy screen for that park and help do that. And then, not exactly associated with the city, but I know that a bunch of us with the Tree Advisory Board are going to be helping out also. Kansas Wesleyan will be having Arbor Day planting also later in the afternoon. I know a bunch of us are going to go help out with that.
Is there a webpage or somewhere we could go to get information on trees that are survive better in our climate than?
Yeah, the Arbor Day Foundation is a great place to start. They have a lot of great information. I know that the city, it should have on its website a list of trees that's recommended. I know that was brought up by Jesse at one point. I know that's one of my personal goals within the Tree Advisory Committee, is I want to see that list expanded upon and some more research done on that to try and expand on that, make sure that we have up-to-date information and an expanded list of information.
Thank you for your time involved with that committee, and I have a proclamation for you, if you'd come forward. Okay, that will bring us to item 3.4.
Item 3.4, recognition of the week of April 30th through May 6th, 2023, as Small Business Appreciation Week in the city of Salina. Leslie Bishop, Executive Director of Salina Downtown, Inc., will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Small Business Appreciation Week, whereas the government of Salina, Kansas celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 33.2 million small businesses in the United States. That's up 1 million from last year. And whereas, small businesses employ 61.7 million people in the United States. Whereas, 94% of consumers in the United States value the contributions small businesses make in their community. And whereas, 91% of consumers shop small due to the personalization and customization components. And whereas, shopping small keeps our small businesses healthy, and that keeps our economy strong. And whereas, supporting local businesses not only pays their employees, but they also spend money at our local, at other local businesses. That means by buying local, you help create jobs for your friends and neighbors, contribute to improve public infrastructure, and invest in your community both socially and economically. And whereas, behind every small business is a local family. Now therefore, I, Michael L. Hoppick, Mayor of the city of Salina, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of April 30th through May 6th, 2023, as Small Business Appreciation Week, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Appreciation Week and throughout the year.
Thank you, Leslie. And as you know, Leslie is the Executive Director of Salina Downtown, Inc., and you have two of the other three musketeers that I call you guys here with you. Could you introduce them?
Yes, I have April Rickman, our executive administrative assistant and event planner, and Diane Gebhardt, our aesthetic specialist. Pots will be planted in downtown Salina in May with hanging baskets.
So.
So Diane does all of that, and then April helps with event planning and helps me just keep on keeping on.
Could you give us an idea of a couple? I know you've got some things coming up here in the next few weeks. Would you like to?
Well, to celebrate Small Business Appreciation Week, beginning May 1st, our community members can buy downtown gift cards that are worth $25 for just $20. Just go to our website, salinadowntown.org. You can key in what stores you want to support or restaurants, and then those will go live for the whole week. We can't do these kinds of promotions without great community partners. First Sprint Kansas, Bank of Tuskegee, and Iron Insurance Partners help offset that $5 along with Salina Downtown. Then we end the long week with a wonderful celebration of live music and art with the Santa Fe Weekender. We have a live band on Friday, The Radicals, and then Saturday we have Sculpture and Rap. And then we also have our summer concert, or spring concert with the Sunset Centers, sponsored by Whedle Financial Group in Salina Downtown. So it's a full week of supporting local, both shopping, eating, music, and art.
Thank you. They say, don't do a job if you don't love it, and these three ladies, I think, love their job because they're, they're full of energy and they do a great job, so.
Well, and last year, we sold just under 200 gift cards, and that put approximately $5,000 right back into the local businesses in downtown Salina. So let's double that.
Okay, great. If you'll come up here, I have a proclamation for you. That was a long list of proclamations, but all four organizations were well worth being recognized for their work. So that will bring us to the consent agenda.
Item, excuse me, 5.1, approve the minutes of the meeting of April 17, 2023.
Okay. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move we approve the minutes of April 17, 2023.
Second. A second to approve consent agenda item 5.1. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes 5-0. That will lead us to administration.
Item 6.1, approve resolution number 23-8122, appointing members to citizen boards, commissions, and committees.
Okay, we have several board appointments. I will read those off for the public. Board of Zoning Appeals nominated is Ken Creer until 8:31 at 23. Building Advisory Board is Lance Smith, to be appointed until 8:31 at 23. Again, those are to fill out current positions that are vacant. Library Board, we have Crystal Stewart, appointed until April 30th of 2025. Judy Knold, reappointed until April 30th of 2027. And Selvin Roman, appointed until April 30th of 2027. And then on City Planning Commission, Ken Wasserman, or Kenneth Wasserman, I should say, appointed until August 31st of 2023. Are there any questions or comments from the commission? And the public?
Mayor, I move we approve resolution number 23-8122, 8122, appointing members to citizens' boards, commissions, and committees.
Second. We have a motion, a second to approve resolution number 23-8122, appointing various members to citizens' boards and commissions. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes 5-0. I would like to thank those individuals who submitted their names and let the public know we still have openings out there for other boards if there's interest, if they are interested, so thank you. That will lead us to item 6.2.
Item 6.2, Cedar Ridge Edition. 6.2A, certification of final cost for 2022 special assessment projects and setting May 15, 2023, as the date for public hearing. And 6.2B, approve ordinance number 23-11151 on first reading, levying special assessments for improvements and establishing that such assessments be collected in annual installments over 20 years.
Mr. Stack.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a project that was completed late last year for some housing near Cedar Ridge, of course, Grand Prairie area, Cedar Ridge Development, just west of Markley, so new housing there. Let's see, let's hit the highlights. It's a fairly long blue sheet, lots to do here, but this, this action is really not to whether this project is feasible or whatever anymore. It's really to set the term of the, of the bond and certify the final cost. So the project is here, as Jacob has put on the screen. Cedar Ridge over here is really pretty much developed out. There's another phase kind of in the northwest corner, and they're not, haven't decided to deal with that yet, but this was, there are 13 lots here. So you've got 13 lots, got a little kind of a curvy street, got a little cul-de-sac here, a little cul-de-sac down here, and 13 fairly large lots there. It's a concrete road. Project was completed last year pretty well, on track, no major change orders, so the good thing is it's less than the preliminary estimate was, which is, not saying a lot, still expensive, but it's, didn't have any major issues. That helped a lot. Good contractor. Guess let's just go through the items to really, A is just certifying the final cost, so really just the cost of the construction were bid with TNR Construction and estimated by staff last year and ended up coming in, like I said, fairly close. So that's the first action. And then establishing the date of May 15th, a few weeks for the public hearing. Basically, they mail out the letters next week to the property owners, which in this case is mostly Cedar Ridge Development, and they would be able to attend the public hearing in a few weeks. The second part of this is based on the size of the project, which is not a real big project, but just with the amount of the infrastructure had to go in there. There wasn't really any sharing of any costs, so it's just 13 lots, you know, pavement and water and sewer that went in. Whereas, in the past, we've had, just to name a few, Mag Hills Estates, Stone Lake, Wheatland Valley, those all kind of had portions of their, they were phasing, that was parts of their, everybody helped pay for, you know, the pond. Didn't build all the houses, but they're still assessing some of the cost of the pond or some of the cost of the Santeri sewer that was going downstream. So spread it out a little bit more, so I guess just, you know, why is this one so much more expensive? It's really, there's no, no one else. This project is, this subdivision's developed fairly slow, so there's just not a lot of other things to spread out. Everything has pretty much been built, so you have to build just for those, those housing, those houses that go in. Just for comparison, the last assessment project that you would have seen, or will see, I guess, actually, Magnolia Hills Estates Number 2, is 45, 42,000 per lot. And Wheatland Valley, you've seen Magnolia Hills 2, you haven't seen Wheatland Valley yet. He just, he chose to decide to, Dan Daly decided to wait on another year on that one before it gets assessed, so it'll be 38,000 per lot. So this, this project is 51,000 per lot, so it's quite a bit more. So the developer is hoping that you will see that the resolution that allows us to go to 20 years of special assessments, or 20 years on the financing of the bonds, will be approved by the City Commission. Basically, you have the authority to do that. Let's see, what's the language? It says, absent special circumstances. It's supposed to be 15 years, however, like with the special, trying to come up with some special circumstances, you know, there's just a lot, a lot of things that, project went about as well as it could, just the environment, the climate, labor shortages, material shortages, availability of brass projects, just general inflation, this, over this last year was not good. So that's why it's, I feel like the 20 years gives you an option to finance over that time. Let's see, basically, today is setting the public hearing date, which talked about May 15th, and then the authorizing the sale of bonds will be on June 13th. First reading of bond ordinance, and then the bonds would be sold later this summer. Actually, I think it's June 26th, so end of June. Fiscal note, as we kind of have alluded to, that there's, it's a fairly expensive project, but having a 20-year assessment bonding rate seems to be what the developers would like, give them the best chance of success on this. So I guess I'll, lots in here, stand for questions.
Okay, I'll start over here to my left. Any questions?
I have none.
I was trying to do the math real quick to see the difference in the monthly payment between.
15 or 20?
20.
Mm-hmm.
Years, and I think I'm doing something wrong, they keep coming up the same number for each one. Didn't carry a zero. Didn't carry a zero or something, or a decimal point somewhere, but is it, is that, or did you happen to have those numbers? And, and the real question was, is that what was considered the special circumstances when city was given the ability to extend it up to 20 years?
That's a good question. I don't know if that's
Or historically, is that, have there been other situations in which it's been lengthened beyond the usual amount?
I know by resolution we provided for the possibility of 20 years. I don't know off the top of my head whether we have any that we've had a 20-year term.
Yeah, I was thinking, this is the first one, isn't it? Maghills 2 wasn't 20 years, I don't believe, was it, Wayne? Or Debbie?
No, it wasn't.
Nope, so this is the first, first one. I would think this might, you might see more of these.
Yeah, I think the staff report acknowledged that you'd received a communication from a group of, of developers asking that you consider 20 years more as a matter of course. The way the resolution 228053 is written, it presumes 15 years unless
Right.
there are special circumstances, so that, kind of on a case-by-case basis, leaves it for you as the governing body. I do know that Stephanie Kool's on the line as a representative of the developer that might be able to speak to their request for the 20 years.
And, and I can't remember the circumstance, but I thought I remembered hearing that there was a reason why the city typically did not bond beyond 15 years, just for the city's perspective?
From a policy perspective, trying to limit the exposure, limit, limit the term, we've kind of progressed from 10 to 15 to 20. Statutorily, it certainly allowed for, but it's been local policy to do less than that 20-year term previously. But I do think part of this conversation on the developer's part is the cost and trying to be price-conscious on a annual assessment basis, trying to get that number down by extending the term.
It's interesting, the last policy too was 10 years with 15 years being the discretion, and virtually everybody had 15 years. So it seems like once, once the 20-year is kind of established as an option, it seems like that's probably what everyone's going to request from now on.
Right, because no one's going to say that their costs aren't
Right.
too high. You know, I, I just see this as setting precedent, which, you know, is, we have the right to do. I just wonder if that, if that's our intent to set this new bar. A more rhetorical question than, than I need an answer for.
And somewhat of a policy question for you.
Wayne just showed me the numbers, about $7 a month is the difference between 50 and
Seven?
15, yeah, 70.
70.
See, I was trying to think, what does that per year be?
Eight forty?
Eight forty, there you go. It's good math.
I can multiply up the division down with, throw on me.
Yeah, I assume that's probably
Seemed like a lot per month, but yeah, it's over, over a year. It's here and there, a little bit here and there helps, I guess.
Does it cost, is our cost that much different when we stretch that?
Well, we structure it to be fully reimbursed by way of the special assessment, so it's really a function of the payments that get passed through to the, the ultimate homeowner. And I, just doing some rough math myself, I came up with the same number, but I'm, I'm working just off of actual costs, not borrowing costs, so when you factor in interest, I, I come up with $72 a month difference between a 15-year and a 20-year term, just on straight principal without accounting for interest.
Debbie is here, so I thought if I get, you got too, too much into the bonding and interest rates, I'm out.
She's got it. She's ready.
Questions or comments to my right?
People come in and don't want to do the specials and just want to pay it, or they have that option. The monthly.
Debbie's, Debbie's coming forward.
Yeah, thank you. I was thinking that ship sales after the bonds are sold, but she
They have an opportunity before bond issuance.
Yes, they do, they're notified, and they're only, they only have the opportunity before bonds are sold. So if they're not the owner when the bonds go into place, they will not have that opportunity once we sell the bonds. That's correct.
So if a person owns a lot right now?
Correct.
They can
They can pay them upfront, yeah.
Okay.
Not really a question, more of a comment. I mean, it'd be one thing if we were just dealing with higher interest rates, but I think you, you're compounding it with the increased costs of materials, labor, et cetera. I think a very good argument can be made for special circumstances, just based on my, my business and sourcing material, and just trying to make margins work, and I'm sure they're even more tricky for developers.
Thank you. Okay, questions or comments from the public?
You might want to give the applicant an opportunity
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
there online.
Ms. Cool, I keep forgetting since she's not in the room.
Sorry, it didn't work out to be there today. Stephanie Kool, Cedar Ridge Development. Thank you for consideration today. We would appreciate the approval of the, the bonds at, and the special assessments for 20 years. I think Mr. Lenk, Commissioner Lenkowitz said it perfectly with regards to not only just interest rates, but building costs. It's just expensive, and we need to do everything we can to minimize the barriers to people getting into new housing. And I recognize that this is not affordable housing, this would be what I could consider step-up housing, so that people can move up, so that additional affordable housing can be made available, and we would appreciate your approval.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Cool?
Wayne did tell me there are two lots that are sold, so they would have the option to, to pay ahead. They'll get that same letter and public hearing in a couple weeks, so if they want to, they sure could. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Cool. Any comments or questions from the public? Okay, I guess the only thing I have to add is, as I look at this going from 15 to 20, is I, and I know it's, it's different, but you look at vehicles now, and because of the cost of vehicles, you know, you used to think you never went more than 48 months, and now they'll loan to you for six, seven years, it seems like, so.
Doing 10-year.
Huh?
They're doing 10-year.
Oh, my gosh, okay. Like I said, it, the world is changing. I look at staff, we, we show a 6.2A and B, but it appears the motion brings both of those together, so.
It's accepting the final cost and acting on the ordinance all in one.
I just wanted to make sure I hadn't missed something, so. Okay, with that, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we accept the statement of the final cost and set May 15, 2023, as the special assessment hearing date and pass ordinance number 23-11151, setting the date of the bond at 20 years on first reading.
I'll second that.
Okay, and that would be actually setting the length, is, so, we have a
Setting the length of the bond.
We have a motion, a second, to accept the statement of final cost and set May 15, 2023, as the special assessment hearing date and pass ordinance number 23-11151, setting the length of the bond at 20 years on first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That item passes 5-0. Thank you. That will lead us to item 6.3.
Item 6.3, authorize the city manager to reimburse Platt River Communities of Centennial, Colorado, in an amount not to exceed $63,005.13 for a public water main extension serving the North End Manufactured Home Park.
Okay, Ms. Tasker.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Martha Tasker, Director of Utilities. The Delray Estates Manufactured Park is located at 917 North, 13th Street is being redeveloped and is now identified as the North End Manufactured Home Park, and it will be redeveloped to include 48 manufactured home sites. The site plan is included in your staff report. The park owner is maintaining ownership and maintenance responsibility for all property and infrastructure within the park, except the public water main loop and fire hydrant. In July 2021, the city's design review team completed a technical review of the proposed site plan. The technical review included a requirement to install a water, public water main connection between 12th and 13th Street. Shortly after that meeting, North End Manufactured Home Park requested that the city pay 50% of this cost, or $67,000, and that was what they estimated at that time for that connection. The August 17 letter is included in your staff report. Staff agreed that the 13th Street to 12th Street connection would benefit the residential area, and sharing of the cost would be considered once we had a cost from the contractor that was going to construct the improvements. The November 2021 Planning Commission letter approved the site plan, and probably subject to this condition that's most important for this piece of the work, is the park owner and operator shall design and construct a looped public water main meeting city design specifications prior to the development of Phase 2. The public water main and fire hydrants must be installed and operational, and a paved access road and fire appurtenance turnaround must be in place prior to placement of homes in the Phase 2 area. The fire marshal had determined that the Phase 1 homes could be installed with fire protection from the fire hydrant on North 13th Street. So as we reviewed the fire protection requirements of the entire site, we determined this would be done in a phase plan. Phase 1 would consist of the 27 homes which are occupied and located near the 13th Street entrance. The Phase 2 would consist of 21 homes which are onsite. The public water main loop and fire hydrant plans have been approved by city staff and the Kansas Department of Health and Environment in October of 2022. The Phase 2 public water main loop must be installed and operational and paved, and the access road in place prior to homes being occupied. As a part of the public water main loop, the existing public water distribution system requires some improvement to prevent a dead-end line at 13th Street. I, I believe when the plans were constructed in 2020 for the water, 8-inch water main, that there was not an easement to make the connections between 12th and 13th Street at that time, so it was not included then. At this time, easements are in place for, for that connection. There's a, a drawing in the, your staff report that indicates where that connection is. This connection allows the water to move from east to west or west to east, and virtually improves the water quality and fire protection for the manufactured homes and the existing residential area to the east. TNR Construction has been selected to construct this public water main loop. Their cost breakdown is provided in your staff report. The 13th Street to 12th Street portion is $63,005.13, and the remaining portion is That breakdown is included in your staff report. The cost of $63,005.13 to complete that 12th to 13th Street connection can be considered a city at-large enhancement. Staff has reviewed the cost breakdown and finds it to be reasonable in our current market. Staff recommends funding the total cost of the $63,005.13, which will be funded from the Water and Wastewater Capital Reserve Fund, which has a balance of over $10.5 million. Staff has identified the standard slate of city commission considerations, with option 1 be, being authorized the city manager to reimburse Platt River Communities of Centennial, Colorado, in an amount not to exceed $63,005.13 for the public vein extension serving the North End Manufactured Home Park upon final inspection and acceptance of the water line. Option 2 is authorize reimbursement with suggested amendments. Option 3 is to postpone reimbursement and identify additional direction to city staff or vote to deny the reimbursement, which would result in Platt River Communities covering the total cost. Glad to answer any questions you might have. And Greg Rosario, and I hope I pronounced that correctly, Greg, is on by Zoom, and between us, we'd be able to answer the questions you might have.
Okay, I'll start to my right.
Well, it's a needed project that, I, I know people that live on North 13th, and I've heard about the water issue long before I was sitting here, so this will be a win-win deal.
I agree.
No questions?
No question.
And I, just technical question, the, the loop is required to have enough pressure for fire suppression, is that correct?
Basically, what we're looking is for two redundant sources of water there in the additional flow. In the event there would be an issue with the 12th Street or the 13th Street, we have a valve and can bring the water in from either direction and provide fire protection at all times.
Well, and I, I agree with Commissioner Long buying kudos to the, to the group that went in there and cleaned this up, and I think this might be the best $63,000 we spend all year, based on being able to take care of the water issue and also make the, that area usable. And again, I, I think you made the comment, but so people understand, the, the homes are back there already, but they're not able to occupy the, the second phase because of this, correct?
That is correct.
I just didn't want somebody to think there's another phase coming.
No, they're, they're onsite and they're set in place, and once this water loop and fire hydrant is in place, they'll be able to occupy those homes.
Is there a timeline on getting that done?
That would be a question for Greg, because he is hiring TNR DIRT to do the work, if he has a construction schedule.
Greg, can
Thank you all for considering this item. The estimate that I've received from TNR Construction is that, once approved, once we sign the bid, they will be, they'll need about three weeks to gather materials, and then they estimate the project will take about 45 days.
Good. Okay.
Two to three months, it sounds like, in that approach.
Yep, good, well, thank you. Thank you for your work.
Yes, sir.
Another piece of addressing our housing issues.
Okay, is there any comments or questions from the public on this?
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. John Blanchard, I live in Salina. First of all, I completely support and concur with the comments made about it being a good investment, the cost share, but also the enhancements that are made to the water system, I think, would probably go beyond just the trailer court, would go to help the neighborhood as well. I just had a couple of questions I probably misheard, but it's, I'm assuming there's more than one hydrant, because it sounded like it said the hydrant, so I'll let that go. And that kind of goes to, I was at a North Salina Community Development Meeting on Thursday evening, and was asked about the spacing of them, that they had gone up there and they seemed awfully close together. So I know just if they're, you know, particularly close together in their mobile homes, you know, the more enhancement we can have, the loop system for one, but also, you know, the hydrants, multiple hydrants would be, would be necessary. So that was just, a lady had asked me, you know, did I know anything about that? I said, "No, but I'm coming to the meeting, I'll, I'll ask that." But I think everybody's pretty supportive of it. It's, it is a really good thing. And then just the last thing, because it is quite a long, it's not Grand Prairie long, but it is, it is, it is a single-access subdivision. Is there, is there any requirements as to single-family dwellings on a single-access road that would pertain to this, that due to other subdivisions that we've been looking at in the past since there are 48? But I'll let at in the past since R R forty-eight? But I'll let you answer a couple of those questions, and thank the developer for the work they're doing up there, and again, I completely support the cost sharing on this. Thanks.
Ms. Tasker?
Sorry, I didn't make it clear. They don't have that sheet that you have in your packet. There's the existing fire hydrant on Thirteenth Street, and a new fire hydrant that's located, I'll say, fairly well between Phase One and Phase Two. And then, in Phase Two, there's the access road and turnaround for the fire department. As far as the question about number of homes, we did much discussion on that in DRT, and without Troy Long here to answer the detail, I don't think I can cover that one at this time.
I don't know the spacing requirement. I know that was a function of the DRT review. And then, with respect to the access points, I don't, I also don't know when this trailer park was first put into existence, but I expect that it predates the fire code that has the two entrance point requirement in it. And as you may be able to see from the aerials, it's kind of a peninsula, and it's bounded by the creek on two sides, and kind of limits its ability to have any other access points.
I would agree.
I don't know if, the applicant might have some additional knowledge about spacing. I know that was a topic of conversation when we did plan review.
To your point about the, about the ability for a second access point, that creek essentially covers the community, really, I'd say on all three sides. So, I don't know if there's any ability to adjust there. But I do know that the spacing in our site plan was submitted very early, I think the term used, the DRT, very early before we even began placing homes in there, and that, and that the city approved the size and spacing of the units that we were placing into the community at that time.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we authorize the city manager to reimburse Platt River Communities of Centennial, Colorado, in the amount not to exceed sixty-three thousand, five dollars and thirteen cents for a public water main extension serving for the North End Manufactured Home Park upon final inspection and acceptance of the water line.
Second. We have a motion and second to authorize the reimbursement, the city manager to reimburse Platt River Communities of Centennial, Colorado, in the amount not to exceed sixty-three thousand, five dollars and thirteen cents for a public water main extension serving the North End Manufactured Home Park upon final inspection and acceptance of the water line. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five-zero. Thank you. That will bring us to other business. Is there anything else the commissioner would like to bring before the group?
I had an item when we heard the Arbor Day proclamation. I heard discussion from several communities about Bradford pear trees, considered an invasive species. They want to, they're reimbursing people to get, take those out and plant a preferred tree. Has there been any discussion about that here?
Not to my knowledge, but that doesn't mean the discussion hasn't happened. We've had financial incentives for planting particular trees, and that program's kind of not utilized as much as it has been in the past, so there might be an opportunity to try to provide some incentive to replace Bradford pears with a preferred plant. We can certainly take that up with Parks Department and the Tree Advisory Board.
Yeah, I just didn't realize that the Bradford pears were a problem, but I kind of like them, but-
There's a lot of them.
There's a lot of them. They grow well here.
They're messy.
Just, it's lightweight. My grandson was here this weekend, and actually went to the Center Street Park for the first time. And it's fun if you're three years old, or if you're eighty-three years old. It's actually some neat stuff in there, so if you just need some exercise or want to have fun getting exercise, try it out. It's actually a nice park.
And just to give credit where credit is due, that is not a city park.
That's true. I made a little note, this is Salina Regional Foundation.
Yes, there was a private citizen that I think kind of led that drive and the funding effort, and then coordinated with the Salina Health Foundation, I believe, and so it was funded with private funds, and it's maintained with private funds.
Just another example of Salina citizens investing in their community.
I'm trying to think of the, it's Sid and Susie Ritz. What's the name of it?
Olivia's Playground.
Olivia's, yeah. Yeah, their granddaughter.
Okay, that will bring us to Citizens Forum. That will, individuals that would like to bring something before the commission, we have asked that you keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Normal amount of Salina, Mr. Longbine, invasive species, there's more and more of this coming. It isn't just current. We've got a lot of problems with invasive species, plants, trees, animals, and it's coming, it's coming to the forefront, and we don't know how to stop them. So, to bring up this subject, it's a good idea. You guys have got to figure out how to stop it.
Okay, anyone else?
Ken Ritz of Salina. A couple of things. Arbor Day is all well and good, but we must recall, I hope that we are a prairie province, and not that we haven't always had trees in this part of the world, but you have to have enough rainfall to both supply trees, which are just pumps for moisture to go in the air, and recharge your groundwater. And USDA has become very concerned. And I don't know how much you travel out and look at pastures, many of which are just totally overgrown, with primarily hedge, which is a non-native species, and then cedars. And as they keep the water from replenishing the groundwater supply, you'll see that in stream flow and river flow, which is something that would be helpful for us to maintain for irrigation reasons, major source of our city water supply and what have you. So, anyway, that's, that's that side, that side to things. But anyway, no, it's interesting what all, how, what different angles there are on various matters. Speaking of the park, I assume you folks are aware that Olivia is no longer with us. She was ten years old, and died suddenly. So, the park's still there. Thank you.
Good afternoon again, John Blanchard. As all of you know, as part of the packet that comes out each week, there's a commission information memorandum, and I'd just like to note the one that came out this week was from our new chief, CJ Wise. It's pretty remarkable of all the things that he's got going on over there, and I hope you had the chance to read that. If you haven't, I hope you'll go back and look at that. Also, I'd like to mention that everything I've heard about the new chief has been overwhelmingly positive. And I personally have interacted with him on a few occasions, and I agree completely that this was a really good selection for this community, so I want to recognize the chief and also the city manager for making that hire. As I mentioned, the information memorandums, I've always felt that the fire department and the police department memorandums contain an awful lot of information. And so, I'll just mention the fire department, because it, it is a really good memorandum. It's about quarterly, as are all of them, but it got me to looking at the August first twenty-two, November seventh twenty-two, and February twenty-seventh, twenty-three memorandums. On August first, in administration, it mentioned the police department accreditation had begun, and it was in self-evaluation mode. Fast forward to November seventh, the accreditation process is in the final submission stage, with the site visit tentatively planned for mid-December. And then a second bullet point was, after a discussion with the Insurance Services Office, ISO, they have agreed to reevaluate the city due to incomplete or incorrect data being presented last year. The goal is to be an ISO one department in five years. We're an ISO two right now. And then, on February twenty-seventh, we had that the site visit for reaccreditation through the Center, Center of Public Safety Excellence is scheduled for mid-March, two thousand and twenty-three, so I don't know if we canceled the one in December or what. And then, another note on the ISO. The question I have is, is there any update to this? Because I checked the CPSC website, and they do have Salina Fire Department listed as a, an accredited IS two, ISO two-rated department, but I couldn't find anything on the updating the accreditation's and ISO status on our Salina Fire Department as part of the city's webpage. So, are we, are we still an ISO one, and are we still accredited? Can you, are you able to update that at all, or?
Our ISO status has changed, and the accreditation is as you described. They agreed to reevaluate based on the data gathering, and so we are regrouping in terms of the data that they want, and how we track that on an ongoing basis. And so, we will kind of go through another process with them once we've had an opportunity to respond to the data concerns and-
Is that, is what you just described, is that the ISO or the CFAI?
It's the accreditation.
The CFAI?
Right.
Okay. Okay, so we're not, so we're currently in limbo then, or?
As far as ISO or accreditation?
As far as accreditation.
My understanding is that we remain accredited, but we, the reaccreditation is, is to be reevaluated weighted when we gather more data.
Okay, any, any date on that?
I don't know the timeline.
No, they typically provide an extension timeframe, and I don't know that we've gotten an official word back from accreditation yet.
The language they use is deferred. Is that what this is?
Yeah, it's deferred. Yeah, so typically, there's onsite, they come onsite every five years, and then they do reaccreditation. So, they came onsite, they reviewed all of our information, and they have deferred the reaccreditation until such time as we provide some additional information, as Mike said. I don't have a actual timeline for that. Usually, it's six months to a year timeframe, but I don't think we have a finalized timeline just yet.
So, we didn't, we didn't receive, we, we, we're not having a hearing?
They, they-
They usually schedule a hearing after their site visit, usually a couple of months?
Right. They, they went through the process as Jacob described, and they're deferring the accreditation based on the need for additional data, which is a task for us, and then we'll take it back up with them. Just to be clear, though, the accreditation is voluntary, voluntary above and beyond ISO rating. The ISO process is something we've been doing independent of accreditation before we ever applied for accreditation.
And we'll hear about that, because we're number two now, and number one is the better rate for residents.
Yeah, and we've had that conversation for a long time. The one was the goal, but it was kind of a lofty goal in terms of, you know, high-hazard response, water flows, and some things that weren't entirely in our control or easy to address, so one remains the goal, but I don't know what it's going to take to get there.
Okay. Main thing is, is I really appreciate the information in the memorandums.
Thank you.
Ben Winholz, Salina. Good afternoon, everyone. I had the joy this weekend of watching my granddaughter play up at Bill Burke in the softball tournament for eight-year-olds. As a proud grandpa, I'm going to tell you, that team spanked butt and took number one. But anyway, on a positive note, the fields look good. They really do. The turf looks good. Let's hope that they put it in right, and it wasn't fast-tracked to a point that we'll have issues down the road. It's too bad that the pods weren't installed sooner because of the fact that they could have used the extra restrooms, because they weren't open yet. Not, the one in the center and the one on the north wasn't open yet. But the, the complex looks good. It really does. So, that is money well spent, hopefully, because there were other tournaments going on, along with the five teams that was on ours, and so there was a lot of money that came to the community. On a lower note, the same afternoon on Sunday, about two-thirty, since it was seventy degrees and there was no wind blowing, I decided that, on the way home, I'd drive by the new tennis complex that's complete to see just how full it was, because if you listen to the STA president, there's hundreds of people that play tennis in Salina, Kansas, and this is the fourth time that I've went by, and so far, of these four times, there has been one person over there. And I, it might have been an STA coach, because there were like a hundred tennis balls on the court that he was on. Maybe he was waiting for a client, I don't know. But four times, no wind, excellent temperatures in the seventies, and the place is empty. Go figure.
And I can't tell you, Saturday, I was at the tennis complex with the twenty high school team doubles tournament while they're playing singles at Central. So, they didn't play on Sunday, but they played from eight AM to probably five PM on Saturday.
And that's fine for a tournament. What I am getting at is that as a partnership that the city gets into, you listen to individuals say, we need this complex, because there are hundreds of people that play tennis in Salina, Kansas. And yet, the four times that I've been there with perfect weather, there has been nobody.
It ebbs and flows.
Thank you. Mr. Ritz, you'll get one chance. No. Sorry, sorry. Okay, is there, no, is there anyone else? Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay. If not, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
To move.
Second.
A motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. See you next week.